Each passing night brings a little grace. The story we've written is not a long one. Sufficiently poetic, I suppose. And now that school is all but over, I've time to analyze the metaphors and prose. There's no use.
This summer youth.
Four.
Whack my knuckles, right?
Yep. Fingernail.
Reach over further.
Call this meeting as Tacoma Park City Council to order. Will a clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Bryan.
Here.
Councilmember Mayo.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
I know that Councilmember Mayo will not be here this evening. I'm assuming Councilmember Smith may show up. Tonight is a budget work session and we've got a couple of areas to go over. And the city manager's going to walk us through it and take it away.
Thanks very much. One of the things that I realized as I was answering some questions from council members and going through the budget is that there were a number of questions about what kind of grants are included in the proposed budget or something similar to a grant was included in the proposed budget and what are some of the other requests or ways to put in requests. And because the various items are somewhat scattered throughout the budget, sometimes they might be in an individual department, sometimes they might be a non-departmental, sometimes they might be a special revenue fund. It felt like it made sense to pull this all together, put it in one place at the beginning just to lay it out, provide a little background, and then you can think about it and talk about it, about the best approach on how to do this as you go forward. So I wanted to start out with that.
And are you advising that it would be best to kind of have this overview, maybe deal with some of the particulars as we get to them in the various sections and then refer back to this if we need to?
I think that would be good.
Okay.
I think as we go through, I think there's a couple different approaches for these programs and that thinking in those various categories may be helpful as you consider them over time and by the different departments. We do provide funds to organizations and residents, sometimes through grants, sometimes through credits, sometimes through special programs. And we are continuing those programs at about the same level as we did in this current year of FY15. The requests for grants though are increasing. It's becoming a popular thing to ask for and the requests greatly exceed the amount that we have allocated for them. Some of the items that are included in the proposed FY16 budget are through our community grant program for which $180,000 is allocated, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes. We do provide an add-on to the state homeowner property tax credit of $160,000. This helps people who own their homes but need extra money to help pay for the taxes. Those that meet the state's criteria, we give a little bit of extra money to. Councilmember Mayo in particular wanted me to make sure to identify that rent stabilization is one of the things that does help make living in Tacoma Park more affordable. The work that is involved in maintaining that system is out of HCD, out of the Housing Department, at $139,500. And then there's foregone revenue perhaps in properties that don't have as much value because of the rent stabilization program and the tax revenue that comes from that.
Can you just say something briefly about the $139,500? Is that staff cost?
That's staff and the consultant costs that goes with the program.
So it's hard cost?
Yes. The, we have the home repair program that we've been doing for the last few years. We're allocating $120,000 to that, plus we have a lot of staff time that's put in to coordinate that program. Starting in FY15 and continuing into FY16 is the new home energy program for people of low, moderate incomes to help reduce energy use. That for FY16, the amount would be about $118,000 and it also involves staff time. We have our emergency assistance service services that are provided at a cost that we allocate of $30,000, plus people put in their donations when they get their stormwater bill.
Some of that money was allocated to Educare last year. Was that what happened?
From the emergency assistance services, of the $30,000, some money was allocated, was reprogrammed to Educare, is that correct?
Or what?
Two years ago.
Educare received a community grant this year for the food pantry.
Or it was a chair to some organization that had applied for a grant.
It went to Must, Ministries United Silver.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have the youth employment program. It's funded with some money from the Rec Department and some from CDBG. We give, we're allocating $37,000 each to Main Street Tacoma and Tacoma Langley CDA, and we can talk about that in a few moments, to help carry out some of their business support services in those two business districts. We have the tenant organizing and capacity building effort, which functions as a contract to help do those services at a cost of $31,500. This past year, we've been working with ACES over at Montgomery College and allocated $20,000. Recreation Department wants to continue that. We have had some problems and are getting some coordination on that. So that may be something that we see if there's a similar program that we continue with this year. The allocation that we make to the Independence Day Committee is $15,000, to the Tacoma Park Folk Festival is $10,000. The Recreation Department has allocated $6,000 for either for the Lunch and Learn Program or again, a similar program. They may not have a location this year, so there's some back and forth on that. And $5,000 to Man Up for the programs that they've been running, the program that they've been running for the Recreation Department. And then we have a variety of other programs that are primarily staff-intensive and less money-oriented. We do have cultural programming that does include some stipends. We have our anti-littering initiative. We have a series of affordable housing educational programs. We have the Lifeline Tacoma Program, a new police explorer program. And then we have a variety of programs in the Rec Department and the library that are at low or no cost to try to meet special populations and the needs of different populations. And when we look through all these things, I think we see a couple of different categories. We see things where we're basically contracting to provide a service that we would otherwise provide and we think is important. Maybe it could be to give money to something that we think is a good, you know, helps meet some goals that we have in the community. And then there's more the grant program, which people put in varieties of suggestions and the committees review those and again, make some allocations based on the criteria and the proposals that are offered. In the community grant program, we're allocating $180,000. It's made up of four different types of grants: capital, cultural, operating, and the mini-grant program. We've allocated some funds to this, but it kind of depends a little bit on the applications that come in. So far, the applications that have kind of made the first cut, the requests total $436,000 for the $165,000 that are the non-minigrant allocations. And that's a lot. What I've passed out to you is some information. One is on the Grants Review Committee and their process and their timeline. One page is the list of groups and the requests that totaled this $436,000, so you can see what's being requested for FY16. And then the last page is a list of grantees and requested ones, requesters for FY16 with the awards that have been made to a variety of organizations from fiscal year 12 through 15, and again, those that have been requested so far this year. There have been a lot of questions about, you know, who's asked for this, how much have they asked, so we thought this would be useful information as you go through things.
Yeah, that's very helpful to have the background.
I'm sorry?
It's very helpful to have the background on what's been done so far.
Sarah, would you say just a few things about the Main Street Tacoma and the CDA, $37,000, what that entails and what that's to include?
Sorry. We're viewing both of the allocations for the Old Tacoma Business Association and the Tacoma Langley Crossroad CDA this year as contracts for services for primarily economic development activities. And this will be, we've had an agreement with OTBA since probably FY03, I believe?
We finished three years last, this year.
True, but they've been receiving us funding from the city since 2000, or FY04, excuse me, sorry, since fiscal year 2004. And the CDA, last year was the first year that we've entered into an agreement with them for, to supplement their budget. This year, we're going to be viewing both of them as contracts for services as far as economic development support, focusing on four primary areas. The first being business retention and expansion and recruitment. The second being to advocate on behalf of the city and do education outreach regarding its environmental sustainability goals and legislation, the polystyrene ban, commercial recycling, things like that. We're also looking at marketing and promotions as being one of the categories that they would provide support to the city in. And the fourth would be to advance our anti-littering initiatives regarding cleanups and things like that. Last year, they received $30,000, up to $35,000 if they could provide a $5,000 match from another entity. In Main Street's case, they've, they're receiving, I think, $35,000 a year from DC for their programming, so they met that match. It's more problematic for the CDA because they're not in Montgomery County, but they're not outside the city limits and they don't go into the.
I don't believe that the council authorized a match, an additional $10,000, half-matched, half-unmatched at all for the CDA.
I just went back through and looked at all the resolutions, or all the resolutions since 2004 related to those, and that was in the FY15 allocation.
But for the CDA?
The CDA, it applied, city manager.
That's right, that's right.
Applied it to both and that was included in.
I don't recall the council's authorizing the city manager to apply it to the CDA.
I believe it was in the resolution for the CDA, yeah, that was approved by the city council.
Huh. It got stuck in, snuck in there.
That funding was not included in FY15 budget. It was taken and reallocated from the grant, community grants program area through the budget amendment process.
And on average, how much did OTBA receive since 2004?
I don't have the average, but I can tell you between FY04 and FY09, they were getting $25,000 a year. Between 2009 and 2013, it went up to $30,000 a year. In FY14, they received the $35,000 plus the $5,000 per match, plus an additional $15,000 for programming in the Tacoma Junction area for a total of $55,000. And this current year, they're getting $30,000 plus $5,000 if they receive the match from DC, plus an $8,000 community grant for banners, and $15,000 for their festival fund. And that totals $58,000 this year.
Okay. And for FY16, you'll notice that there are requests on the grant requests from both Old Tacoma Business Association and the CDA for additional funds.
Little question. You've described how these funds are supposed to be used in four different categories, you know, marketing, assisting with programs like the anti-litter program, et cetera. I assume that you've had discussions with both executive directors to their comfort level with the money being earmarked in that way? Because my recollection is that in the current budget, that $30,000 that we granted, it wasn't earmarked so much.
The agreements have historically included a scope of work which links to those general categories with the Old Tacoma Business Association. Up until, I'm proposing moving away from that model for FY16, but historically, it's been tied to the Main Street model as far as their volunteer committees. It's my understanding that they've had challenges in terms of recruiting volunteers for many of those committees, so it's part of the reason for moving into an economic development support contract. And then in the CDA's agreement, it has those four different categories. The names might be a little different, but that's what those generally boil down to. And the scope of services for their agreement as well. So it's included in there, and then they both are required to report on, on a quarterly basis, what they do to advance those particular goals.
Rocco Casagrande, the head of the OTBA, told me a number of months ago that they have no problem with doing a contract for services type of arrangement.
I would doubt CDA has any objection whatsoever. I was just curious to the degree to which you've just had, you know, you've talked about it with each of the directors and helped them under, so that you're both on the same wavelength.
The CDA appears to be quite comfortable with the scenario last year, and we've had very preliminary conversations with Melanie. The OTBA has, they're, that might be a longer conversation.
One of the things I think you should know is that through, with all of these grants, we have, we have contracts with them and we make it very clear, you know, what they need to do to meet the requirements. And that's something that I feel very good about, that we do that. As we go forward, I'd like to be very clear from the council about what your expectations are of some of these grants or these payments, so that there's not surprises.
I just want to make sure that I have an accurate sense of where the OTBA and CDA, how the grants have been used in the past. Of course, a much longer history with OTBA, that it was generally tied to these four areas, but maybe not as specifically as it's proposed to be now, or it was more broadly drawn in other areas in the past? I'm just trying to figure out, the four areas that you mentioned that are going to be more specific going forward, kind of what the history has been of incorporating those areas. Has it been a gradual movement away from more general granting, or has it always been tied to something like this?
It's always been tied to something. The reality is we're probably moving a little more into the general category in terms of, with the memorandum of agreement to provide operating support to OTBA, it was very specific in terms of the number of cleanups, the number of festivals, the number of whatever. And I'm hoping that we can do it a little more broader scope because of the changes in the categories regarding the environmental, education outreach, business retention and expansion. Having done many of those things in the past, I know that it's hard to establish goals because it's such a nebulous kind of thing. But we monitor the activities that the CDA, for example, is doing on a quarterly basis, and a lot of work gets done in those particular areas.
Thanks.
Okay, so I just wanted to kind of give you a first blush at this. Some of the different things that, as you look through the list of grant requests, I did forward on the request, the $30,000 request from Man Up that was received. They also do have the requests through this program for $168,000 through the Community Grants Program. So there's a variety of different requests, and sometimes just making sure that we understand what the different categories are, what it is they want, might take a little bit of work. And I'm still not completely clear, so we'll have to go through that. In any event, I did want, I don't know if there's any other general questions that you have? Yes?
Yes, I, not really a question. I just wanted to thank you so much for this report. I think it's very helpful. And I hope that the council takes the time to address the question you put on the table, which is, what's the purpose of each of these? And what are our goals? And we'll be better able to, I think, assess where it is we want to continue support.
I appreciate it. I have seen these different categories work very well, but it's useful to know what your preferences are and also then what kind of money we're talking about for the different categories.
And why are we doing it?
And exactly why we're doing it, right.
And it's also helpful to have this comprehensive look at it, rather than just dealing with one-offs as we go through the budget. And looking at a category and saying, well, if we do a little bit more there, and then realizing later, oh, that maybe conflicts or augments some other area.
I don't, hopefully we're comprehensive. We'll find out.
Yeah, I think one of the important considerations we have to make at the council is be careful that we're only doing those things that we as a council should be looking at and not just trying to use residents' money to do the things we're interested in. There are a lot of these organizations that can be supported by fundraising through the organization itself, in which case the residents of Tacoma Park can support the organizations they want to. But there are certainly considerations that we make for granting to certain organizations that we see as citywide benefit.
I'd hope that the Grants Committee is taking into account the fundraising resources of the applicants in their evaluation.
Is this information being shared with the Grants Committee?
Yes.
Good.
All right. Now that Sarah's sat down, we can go on to HCD. Do you want to stand here?
I have a tendency to talk too much, so I'll stand because I'm a little uncomfortable. I just wanted to clarify one thing from Man Up. I believe the printout that Susie distributed indicates that they are proposing an overall budget of $100,000. The program guidelines that were adopted by the council about a year and a half ago would limit them to $30,000 in one category and $15,000 in another and all of that. So the $100,000 you referenced from Man Up is their overall program budget.
What are the maximums for each of those categories?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I say what are the maximums for each of the categories?
I believe it's $22,000.
You don't have to, it's not like a quiz. You could just send that, you could send that to me.
Actually, I kind of know in my head.
You could send that to me later if you'd like.
Oh, but some of these are actually not in the running anymore. For instance, I was copied on the exchange with Real Food for Kids Montgomery and so on that had a deficiency in their application, so that's not indicated here.
I'm not sure which one you're looking at. I gave.
This, this one has the, a little bit more activity.
Okay.
The, I think the big one shows who all applied.
Oh, I see. Yeah, okay, fine.
What the demand was, which was over $500,000. And the Grants Review Committee has narrowed the list a little bit.
Yeah, I understand.
And now it's about four or something.
I was looking at the wrong thing. I didn't realize they were different.
Okay, we're going to Housing and Community Development.
As you're aware, we offer a variety of programming which is divided up between five different divisions within the city's department. And this programming ranges from arts and humanities programming to rental housing licensing. We do transportation planning and home repair programs. So it's a very wide-ranging category of programs that are offered through the department. If you could go to the next slide. What I've tried to indicate here is just to kind of give you a sense of the ranges of, to give you a sense of the activity that is coming out of the department and the impact that it has on the budget. With our revenues, those are primarily rental housing licenses. It varies dramatically from year to year depending upon how many biennial licenses we have. We've also seen somewhat of a drop in license fees, not because of the cost on a per-unit basis, but because some of our larger rental facilities have transitioned over the years to condominiums and not all of those are now, are rental now. So what might have been 200 rental units are now 20. Our expenditures have gone up 4.5% this year. That increase is due solely by, as a result of a couple of new initiatives that we're proposing for FY15, excuse me, 16. One is the Open Space Land Management Plan. The other is the first phase of a boundary survey project that we're proposing. If you were to eliminate those, our budget actually goes down a little bit this year. Our FTEs are also fairly flat. They've dropped a little bit, but that has more to do with how a particular staff person was categorized. They've moved into a special revenue fund category. And that 9.63 FTEs is divided up between 14 people, two interns and 12 staff members. I've also included in the, on the slide, our capital project numbers and our special revenue fund numbers. Those vary from year to year depending upon the progress that either the city has made with a particular capital project, or with the progress that someone we've received grant funds for has made to accomplish their goals. But you get an understanding that there's a lot of money and a lot of projects that are coming out of this particular department. I've also included the departmental funds. This is in large part linked to the community grants that Suzanne was talking about earlier. It also includes funding for the Arts and Humanities Commission, the Emergency Assistance Fund, et cetera. If you could go to the next slide. The first two projects I mentioned briefly that are part of our initiatives for FY16 is the Public Land and Open Space Management Plan, which our planner, Erican Osbarks, spoke with you about several weeks ago, in terms of looking at a more comprehensive approach, or taking a more comprehensive approach to how the city acquires, maintains, and enhances its available open space, be that parks to public facilities to rights of way. We have a very small amount of roughly $20,000 in the budget. We have a very small amount, roughly $20,000 in the budget for contract for service fees, be it surveying and engineering work, if that's needed. It will, could vary. A majority of that project will be completed in-house. We're also looking at undertaking the first phase of what could be a fairly, fairly involved boundary survey, which would give the city the information it needs to more clearly define its boundaries, which has an impact on a variety of jurisdictional issues, be it from police department to where the right-of-way is and does the city have the right to do work within the right-of-way. It might be in DC, really, and it's not in Maryland like we think it is.
So I ask a variant of this question every year. Planning is not a rebated service from the county. What are our prospects of getting Montgomery County to do this survey?
I can answer that. I've been trying to get this survey done for years. I've tried to get the state to do it. I've tried to get the MTA to do it for the Purple Line. I have tried to get the counties, both Montgomery County and Prince George's County, to work on it. And I have hit a brick wall. So just, it's not to say that it can't be done, but it has been very difficult.
When we do a land grab, start an argument, and then they'll have to do it. Just move a bunch of boundary stuffs, you know.
At a minimum, it would be...
Where it's advantageous, say it's ours.
Yeah. At a minimum, it would be used to update the city charter, because with the recent changes in the boundary lines regarding on Flower Avenue, the city charter is not, does not accurately reflect the boundaries of the city of Tacoma Park. It is not a simple endeavor and involves a lot of work and research in terms of a variety of deeds, annexations, possibly survey work, et cetera.
And how many phases do you anticipate? You said that this is the first phase?
The estimates we receive from the engineers that we have under contract are up to about $125,000 to do a very comprehensive approach. The number of phases, I think, will depend on what they discover and how much, what types of resources the city might be interested in allocating towards that project over time.
Thank you.
The $50,000 was just...
Just to get it started. And if, in particular, if there's a, someplace that's at a critical place where we're trying to do some redevelopment work, that we could get that as part of the, as part of the plan.
You know, to add one probable further impossibility to the picture, the boundary along the railroad tracks is with the railroad right-of-way. And I'm not sure who owns that. Is that CNO or BNO, rather, or is it actually BNO or CNO?
I don't know the answer to that, but I do know we've actually discovered some property that doesn't seem to exist.
Yeah.
It could be nowhere.
You know, the way that it's written is the third rail. And how do you determine the third rail? And, you know, so there's, it is, CSX owns part of that, but I think it refers to the third rail of the metro. So I'm, not, not the third rail that's electrified, but...
Yeah.
Kind of called it.
So we do this survey, let's say, and get it all done. How do we, just because we do the survey, it doesn't necessarily mean that the affected jurisdictions on the outside, on the other side, are necessarily going to say, oh, we didn't know that, but gee, thank you so much, this is great. As opposed to, they might just say, well, that's your survey, our, you know, we don't believe it has standing. Do you understand what I'm getting at?
We have, we have dueling surveys. We have duel, we have dueling maps. Time and time again, there's controversy over where the line is.
Right. Like on Elm Avenue.
There's, yeah, that's a different situation. But for example, there was, you know, there was a case where there was actually a murder in the midst of, in the median on University Boulevard. It was a real significant question about, was it appropriate for Tacoma Park Police to have taken care of that? There's issues that relate, the way that the, when we did unification, because we weren't certain about the boundary, the definition of the Montgomery County-Prince George's County line in that segment is the boundary of the city of Tacoma Park. It doesn't say what those, that boundary is. It's just, whatever our boundary is, that's the county line. And so if you're trying to do something along New Hampshire Avenue in the segment, you know, you'd really want to know where the county line is, and that could make some differences.
Is it, just, does it work sort of in the way that whoever did the most recent survey is the one that has standing? In other words, if we do a survey, say, along Eastern Avenue, and the district government seems a little reluctant to accept it, we can sort of say, well, this is going to stand and lessen until you do your own?
It's helpful if we actually have facts and we don't have facts. When we, when we did unification, there were certain segments where we tried to get information from SHA's archives, and they couldn't find some data. And so it really, the reason that the number is high is because you have to go back and you have to look at the actual descriptions of different annexations of subdivisions over the years. And so it's a, it's a much more difficult thing than just a standard property survey.
No, I'm not concerned questioning the cause.
But I, and I would hope that the other jurisdictions would appreciate it when it was done.
Yeah, you would think, but on the other hand, they're depending.
Depends on the results.
I think a lot would depend on why you were telling them that you wanted them, or what you were telling them. If you wanted them to start doing something we weren't doing before, that might be grounds for a stronger argument than the reverse.
Okay.
I had a question about, since we've talked about how tight this year's budget is and looking to the future, is there a reason to start this now versus Phase One in another budget year?
That would be a decision up to the council. It's proposed as being something that's needed. It can be delayed.
Do you want to go through the other?
We're also, received some additional funding for the facade easement program, the, through this Community Development Block Grant Program. Our allocation, if you will, is continuing to drop, so this fiscal year, we're looking at about $79,000, which would give us sufficient funds to do, on average, about five facades. And we've started promoting that program already so that we can get the money out the doors once the contract has been executed.
What's the demand like? What is the demand like?
The demand for the program?
I mean, if we had unlimited funds, how much would people actually ask for? $100,000, $200,000?
If we had unlimited funds without some of the constraints that the Community Development Block Grant Program has, there would probably be a greater demand. The way this program is structured, it's a facade easement, which is different than a loan or a grant. And we have some caps as far as how much money could be allocated for one. If we had additional funding that did not have those same federal restrictions, there would be a greater demand, I believe. Not necessarily in the Old Town area, because there's been a lot of facade money invested in that part of the world. But I can see funding be of interest to the people on Flower Avenue, for example, Erie, and potentially more on New Hampshire Avenue. The other challenge we have is with the, this particular program is it's limited as far, from a geographical standpoint. So if you go up to the CDA, it's only the right side of the road and not the left side of the road that can qualify for funding. So we have, in an effort to advance this program, spoken to the folks at Nightingale and to see if there's a way we can facilitate some additional work on that property. It used to be the old Walgreens property. We're also looking at doing a couple of community legacy projects. You may recall, we received two $100,000 awards for one project on New Hampshire Avenue, $6,450, I believe, for streetscapes and site improvements with Claudio Joseph's property. And the others for a trail development and some site work with Parkview Apartments, which would provide access, or better access, to Opel Daniels Park, as well as do some green improvements to the grounds, rain gardens, things like that. And then last on the list is cultural plan update. The cultural plan was last up, well, not last updated, it was created in 2005, and we're proposing that that be updated. That would be done largely in-house, with the support of the Arts and Humanities Commission at a minimal cost.
Can you give us some ideas of what would be new for the plan, the cultural update?
I hesitate to answer that. I anticipate there being a big shift in the results of their, the work. We'll be going through and doing a variety of survey, using a variety of survey tools. When the culture plan was initially adopted or developed, it was before the auditorium existed, before a lot of the performing spaces that you see now, before Busboys and Poets, Seekers Church, The Republic. All of those places were in, are now available, whereas when this was originally established, they weren't. So I'm thinking that we'll shift away from the goal or the focus of that program, which was to create space, to more of a programming demand. But that's just a guess right now.
I want to just add, make, make a general comment with regard to the facade easement program and the use of Community Development Block Grant money, which historically has been the source of funding for that. Is that right?
Correct.
And we know that block grant is shrinking in terms of allocation and also eligible areas because of changes in census data or whatever criteria that HUD uses. And I'm just sort of wondering, when I see a company the size of Nightingale that has the wherewithal to redevelop that whole project, and hopefully, Lord willing, will actually do that someday, you know, we don't expect them to do it right away. If it, wouldn't just make more sense to try to allocate funds for economic development incentives? It would take some time to build a fund large enough. But in a lot of the communities we've learned about, who've stimulated, tried to stimulate redevelopment where they wanted it, it's been useful for that municipality, in many cases, to have its own source of pot of money that it can use as a carrot to get commercial property owners to get off their duff and do something. And I just sort of wonder if the facade easement program, as small and shrinking as it is, is really the kind of leverage tool that's going to be useful in the future as opposed with, and it's, you know, it's tied down a little bit by HUD's rules, whereas if we had our own kind of a program in the future. And I'm not necessarily saying that it needs to be an FY16, because it probably, we don't have the money to do that. But I'm just thinking that it might be better for us, in the long run, to be thinking in those terms.
In my last position, we were able to secure funding from the state, which we invested and was repaid back, and so we could capitalize a revolving loan fund.
Yeah.
So over a period of five years, I think we were able to build them up to over $1 million in three different pots of funds. So the tricky part is getting it capitalized and then being prepared to make loans as opposed to grants.
Right.
And that's the hard part as far as capitalizing it. We've tried to do that with community legacy funding, but they tend to limit their programming for projects like that to Main Street areas. They already have a revolving loan fund for exterior improvements, as I understand it. And it's, they have not been supportive of proposals like that in other parts of the city.
And I'm going to dig into a memory cell and say, were you referring to when you were in Faribault?
Yes. And you said it right, true. And then I...
I dug that one pretty deep.
Again, we have a variety of programming that we offer, and I've just picked out a random group of them to give you a sense of some of the programming that's going on. The Tacoma Junction will be taking years. I don't see anything, I don't see ribbon cutting for four to five years with economic development services contracts. We've already mentioned that. The New Hampshire Avenue Corridor, it's not only the project that I referred to earlier at $6,450, but also the facade improvements, the various interactions that we have property owners down there, a lot of the streetscape efforts that we're doing. It's just a collection of things that are designed to promote the revitalization of the New Hampshire Avenue Corridor. We also have the Exterior Home Repair and Energy Upgrades Program, which is continued but new. There's a different spin on it. We are collaborating with Gina, the Sustainability Coordinator, in offering both the Exterior Home Repair Program, as well as, and combining it with her Energy Upgrade Program. The timing is a little off, but we're hoping to work with the same group of people to get not only some of the exterior repairs done to their homes, but also get them new energy-efficient appliances, insulate the property, do a lot of things that we don't have the resources now. We're asking for an increase in the amount of funding that's available for the city's side of that equation, going from $80,000 up to $120,000. The Emergency Assistance Fund, you've chatted about, Safe Routes to School Program and the TKPK 5K Challenge, you're all very familiar with. That is a program that we will also have to evaluate over the years. It's funded solely by the state, and they are moving more and more away from operating and programming. And we've been informed as of two weeks ago that any future funding will require a local match. So a decision will have to be made in terms of whether or not you wish to continue that program and if you wish to invest money in it.
And how much would the local match be?
How much would the local match be?
It depends on the program that's being applied for, but it's 20%.
Have you considered an interior home repair program, or you guys just want to focus on exterior? And maybe something specifically for seniors?
This particular program is targeted for low-income individuals, so they have to income-qualify. And that's both designed for the Exterior Home Repair Program, as well as a mandate of the Energy Upgrade Program. We have tended to shy away from interior improvements because they can get really pricey, whereas with the exterior approach or focus, it addresses the city's concerns regarding the property maintenance code and is a little easier to bite off into small chunks, though it is very expensive. This last go-around, we removed trees for property owners that had dangerous trees on site. And it's very expensive to remove a tree.
Yeah, you have to make that replacement.
Yeah.
My mom just had a tree removed from her house, and it cost $4,000.
We've had, yeah.
So the interior piece concerns me, because more and more people are going to be retiring. They're not going to have the money to, you know, fix up their house, or there might be an issue. And if we're not available, then, you know, whatever that problem is will just persist.
Correct. If you were to go into, focus more on an interior thing, you would, additional funding would be needed, and we would undoubtedly have to either add additional staff members with the technical skills to write up the plans and do more comprehensive scope of work, or contract it out. Because it's a little more engineered than...
Right.
Painting and replacing siding.
And if it's exterior, it matches up more easily with what we actually expect for...
That's right.
Right.
And it kind of, going to interior opens up a whole different area. But the question I originally had on this Exterior Home Repair Program, as I looked at the budget, I was looking for places where, if we needed to put something on the reconciliation list to balance other things that we wanted to add, so that we were adding and subtracting rather than just adding, I kind of made a note to myself that this was a potential one, that it's not like we have to, we have to do it, we want to do it, but it's not like we have to do it. We could give it up for a year, we could reduce it, we could do something. But I'm wondering, with the way you're talking about it here, with the home repair linking up with the Energy Upgrades Program, can you just say a couple of words about that linkage and how... about that linkage and how important that linkage is, because I want to understand whether I want to even consider putting this on the reconciliation list?
Think of it as a tree. At the very beginning, at the trunk, it's going to be a joint effort. And then as applications are received and evaluated, which will be all done in, in my shop, then they will be parsed out to the environmental group and then the Exterior Home Repair Program. There'll be a lot of interconnection at various points throughout that process to make sure that we're not doing something that they were planning on doing, or redoing something that they've already done, or missing something in the mix because we have two different groups going out to the same place.
And, and remind me, it's 120 for the home repair and how much for the upgrades?
We're averaging about 5,000, or excuse me, for Gina's property, I think that's 178,000?
It's 118,000 for the FY16 portion.
Okay, so it's, it's about half and half.
Well, Gina's money's available now.
Now.
And the funding that we're requesting for FY15 has already been allocated, and we're in the process of closing those out.
Okay, so, so in, in the current fiscal year, this process isn't twinned because your process went forward before there was the energy upgrade money?
It's a twin right now because we're gearing up, hoping that you will continue to fund it in FY16. If the decision is made to reduce the amount of money or eliminate the program, then we would just turn over all of those applications to Gina, and she would do what she could with them.
Okay. Thanks, that's helpful.
And I just have a question about the Safe Routes to School. I know you said the match is potential future, not this year, but can, could stuff that we're already doing, like crossing guards that are being paid out of something else, be reallocated into Safe Routes to School in order to create a match? Maybe that, well, when it actually comes up, maybe that kind of thing is-
It would not, you would not be reallocating, you would just continue to-
Yeah, we, we take a crossing guard who's now in the police, and we stick the crossing guard into Safe Routes to School, and there's your match.
Yeah. We just learned about the new-
So something to think about when it comes up.
Rules, so they haven't had any of the training yet?
Yeah, we have to look and see what, what makes a match.
And I'm not sure the funding because the grants, if, if you want a complicated program to administer on a grant basis, I can introduce you the Safe Routes to School Program-
Well-
Because all of these cycles don't match, yeah.
Well, at a certain point in any program, you look at it and you say, is it worth it?
Right. And that's a question regarding the, the 20%. They're, they are also focusing more on capital projects as opposed to programming. I don't think I mentioned that, which of, by design, is sidewalks that are within, very specific routes within the city, and it's a small city. We have only so many schools and so many sidewalks.
We have been focusing on those.
Do you notice, at least I notice, is that these grant programs, whether it's block grant or cable money or state programs, they keep shifting more and more to capital uses, which probably says more as opposed to operating or programmatic, you know, services, is because when it's hard capital, it's easier for the people to administer the grants. So they're really not thinking so much about the needs on, on our end. They're thinking about how to make it easier on the-
Correct, correct. A majority of the grants that we have access to because of your municipality focus more on the capital as opposed to operating. There's a defined beginning and a defined end.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Were you going to say anything about Arts-
And then the Arts and Humanities Series will be continuing. We are, it appears as though we may be dropping the storytelling segment of it. They are looking at moving up to Bus Boys and Poets this upcoming fall, but the rest of the programming is continuing. And then for capital projects, we just have two this year that kickoff or continue in FY16. The Ethan Allen Gateway Streetscape Project that we've been working on for quite some time. We received TAP money for that, and contracts need to be let in October, excuse me, October, if we were to continue the, it's either the contracts need to be let or the bids have to be announced in October if we want to continue to access those funds. And then we have a small, small amount of money set aside for public art. We have, if you look in the budget for future years out, we have some funding for a variety of projects that would have an impact on the Tacoma Junction area and the site itself.
Okay. Anything else?
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
All right.
Looks like we move along.
Thank you.
And let's see.
Just one point about how we're going to proceed. Do people want to have the opportunity to put anything on the reconciliation list as we go through? It doesn't mean it has to stay there. You can put it on and decide later that if you were the only one who wanted it on there, you can take it off. I heard Councilmember Stewart ask about one possible one and didn't know if you wanted to do that.
Yeah, and we could put it on the list now and then discuss it later to have the boundary survey, phase one removed, yeah.
Yeah, just, just because I figure it's helpful as, as we, as I'm sure we will, we will add budget reconciliation items that cost us money. Do we have any offsetting items? So we'll, we'll put that one on the list, and for the moment, I'll put the 120 for the Exterior Home Repair on the list.
The whole 100 one?
Just, just to put it on there, you know, there may be that nobody agrees with me, and I decide later as we go through, eh, never mind, but we'll put it on there as a, as a placeholder for now. All right, General Government.
Oh, I, I, actually, I didn't mention it when we went through there, but you included continued anti-littering campaign.
Yes.
That was $20,000 this year?
Was, was the anti-littering campaign 20,000 this year? We have 8,000.
Well, in, in any case, the real question is whether you have measures of the effectiveness of that campaign and what is the figure for the coming year, because I didn't look it up. And, you know, are you confident that that figure is justified, whatever it is in the coming, for the coming year?
The budget's fairly nominal. This year, I think it's 10. Next year, it's 8,500 or something like that.
I'm sorry?
It's 8,000. It's 10 this year and 8,000 next year.
And that's primarily for printing and incentives. The woman who is coordinating that is working largely with the Public Works Department to facilitate pickups in certain spots, and then working with volunteers to do cleanups. So we have adopted spot program.
I'm, I'm really curious about the perceptions or the measurements of the effectiveness of the campaign. You know, you can do that by stats of, we had so many pickup events, and they collected so much, and such and so organization, like the Young Activists, have adopted a particular spot, but it would be good to have some kind of report on the activities and the effectiveness, if there's some way to measure the effectiveness. And if there isn't, you can still report on what activities were done under-
The activity information is included in the budget in the benchmarks.
Okay, sorry, I didn't absorb that yet.
In 51, in the Code Enforcement Division.
Okay.
Sarah, I've, me.
The fan is so loud.
Yeah, it's loud today.
What?
The fan is very loud right now.
Yeah, it's hard to hear you as well. On, on page 117 of the departmental summary, you talk about certain projects that are allocated, money's allocated for, like the boundary survey and open space management plan, $20,000, which you've already talked about. But now, after that, you have redevelopment of the Tacoma Junction, $10,000. And then further on, it says, this last sentence, this category also includes funding 120,000 to assist property owners in correcting identi, is that?
It's a long way of saying this, you have home repair.
That's the, that's the program that, that we were just talking about, yeah.
All right, then what is the, the 10,000, how did you come up with the $10,000 figure for the Tacoma Junction project? Is that-
Is Tacoma miscellaneous consulting services that I imagine we're going to need, be it additional support or something to supplement the process as far as the disposition of that property? It does not include the cost of any special counsel, which I would say is in the City Manager's budget?
Yeah, I, that was, I'll, we'll talk about that in a minute, because I didn't see it in the City Manager's budget.
It's in the legal budget.
Yeah, I didn't see it there either, but, but, okay, thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and go through the General Government, I've got staff here if there's specific questions, but it seemed to make sense to, to go through this. As you look through the General Government section of the budget, there's very little change from the current year of FY15. The things that there, that are new are a proposed increase in one full-time employee in the City Manager's office. This to be discussed with council about how we move forward with some of the responsibilities of the City Manager's office. It is an election year. We, I think the most important thing from a day-to-day standpoint is continued implementation of technology and software improvements that are already underway. These will improve our services, reduce paper, save time, and particularly will allow greater access by residents to a number of the, a lot of the information that we have. We are switching to the new finance system. That should be, we're hoping that the switch takes place in August. We've already started switching into a new timekeeping system. We will be getting some better collaboration software, and we'll continue our efforts on digitate, digitization of records. We've postponed a little bit of that while we get the financial system on board because that actually takes care of a lot of that, and we wanted to build on what comes with the financial system. There's, the General Government divisions include Legislative, which is you, General Management, which is the City Manager's Office, Finance Department, Finance Division, our Legal Services, Information Systems, HR, and City Clerk. And this basically references the overall department expenditures, which go up 12%. The increase is due to the addition of the position in the City Manager's Office, the overlap of the Finance Director position, which will be for several months, and the software upgrades that we're looking forward to. Thank you for the quiet. We have little change in the funds allocated for the City Council or the other activities in the Legislative Division. $15,000 is allocated for the election.
Can you, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
How does that compare to prior years when we were hiring consultants to, for, to have a high-tech kind of balloting process?
It's a- Flat cheaper. Well, it's cheaper than two years ago when, when we used the ESNS equipment. That was, we, that was a $23,000 election. The years before that, we, our consulting services were essentially free. So we spent maybe five to $7,000 on elections, that sort of thing. We were hoping to focus a lot this time, since we're going to go low-tech at this point, focus on translation and materials and advertising and promoting the election. So we plan to do a lot of focus on that.
Thank you.
I, I appreciate the concern about being able to answer all the management needs in the city and the possibility of doing that via the addition of a position in the City Manager's Office. I am concerned about the uncertainty there, especially given how close to the wire, how close to the wire we are on the reserves and all of that kind of stuff. And I do note that the actual duties of that position are uncertain because they depend in part on the hiring of a deputy city manager, what that person's capabilities would be. And then there are certain other uncertainties, for instance, in particular, what the city will choose to do in the coming fiscal year with economic development activities that would be part of maybe the deputy city managers', maybe this new position's responsibilities. I, I think that given the uncertainties, my preference would be to defer that position, in other words, to take it out of the budget, but to consider it, when we have a better idea what that need is and what that person would do, to consider it in a budget amendment. A budget amendment is part of the well-defined budget process the city has. I know there's been some resistance in the past to altering the payroll of the city, adding positions through budget amendments. I think that it, in my opinion, at least, it's entirely appropriate to do that. So my preference would be to strike the additional position from the FY16 budget that we're considering right now, and instead to consider it or alternatives when we have a better idea of what the need is later in the fiscal year, at which point I would potentially add the position via a budget amendment.
I appreciate that.
Let me say, I would not change the tax rate because I know this, the potential savings would be significant, but I would leave the tax rate at what you've proposed because I think we could use that extra bit of padding.
Okay. I appreciate that. The, I was named city manager last week, so having to prepare this budget as an acting role and not knowing who would be taking on the position and what the requirements would be, I felt that it made sense to put in a, a position that could be considered a part of the play. And I would either do, as you said, which is defer until there's a decision, or this gets put in there as a placeholder and then maybe doesn't get filled. It's a, I think it is one of the things that I listed as an option as you go through the budget. I think it's entirely realistic. I have not spent time in, in identifying what that position would be because it really does depend, as you mentioned, on the capacity of who would be chosen as a deputy. So it doesn't matter to me how that's handled, but I do want to make sure that it's recognized that it's a possibility that it may be needed.
I, part of my concern also is to just make sure that there's a very public process of setting, establishing and determining the duties that a person in that position would have normally going into the budget. Every person in here has a set of roles that's either existing or planned, and there's no set of roles for this position. So it should be a public process for the determination of that. Once we put it in the budget, the city manager has authorization to, has more leeway, frankly, than I would prefer to do things without the public process that I'd prefer to see here.
So do you want to put that on the reconciliation?
Sure.
And, and we don't necessarily, do we know a dollar figure associated with that, or you'll come up with one?
Actually, I do have a dollar figure. I don't have it on the top of my head, but we did, we did allocate it at what an assistant city manager position would be, which would be a step lower than a deputy, simply to have a, to have a number that went into the budget.
I, I, I will repeat that I would not put this money somewhere else because I really would hold it for potential use for this purpose in the course of the fiscal year. Of course, if it's done in the course of the fiscal year, it's not going to be the full amount it would be if we were done at the start of the fiscal year. All the same, I would leave the tax rate alone. I would not allocate the money to anything else. I would keep it in reserves.
Okay.
Others might have different opinions.
Yeah, no, I would just like to echo that I agree with Councilmember Grimes that if we decide not to move forward with it in the budget now, I would not want to see that money offset something else, because I do think as we move through this process, there are priorities that we've discussed as a council, as we just saw with the community grants projects, lots of needs in the community that may fall to this person, or there may be other things that come up in, as we discuss the budget and move through other departments, since we've only gotten through one so far.
Okay, so we'll put that on the list, and you'll let us know at the appropriate point what that dollar figure is.
Yes. So for the City Manager's Office, under the General, General Management Summary, the expenditures with that position increase the budget by 23.8%. There's also, within the General Management- There's also within the general management budget, a lot of our expenses for participation in, for our COG membership and NML and a variety of other kinds of things that are more citywide. And of course, the city manager's office is to advance the council's interests. Go to finance division, a very standard budget. The only significant difference is the overlap of an incoming finance director with Ms. Brooks, who hopes to leave at the end of September.
She just got her feet tapping, getting ready to go.
Yeah, she's pretty, one of the things that I do appreciate though, she has her list of all of the ways for us to practice financial prudence and she's making sure that as we put our new financial system into play, that it advances our various requirements. And she'll be training in the new finance director to uphold all of these important levels and to continue to receive the GFOA certificate of achievement for excellence.
Actually, before we move on off of finance, I just had a question. Under miscellaneous, for FY16, it went up to 11,000 from 4,000. The year before, I was just curious about that. Could be a really great going away party, but...
Most of the increase is due to the new copier service. My department, because of problems in the past, was not charged the total cost of our copier printing services and the balance of the costs were related to increasing the training for staff.
With the new, oh, just general training?
Yes, training for my staff because the previous budget, I didn't put a lot of money in that area and we're trying to encourage staff to improve their skills.
Thank you. Any other questions on finance? Under the legal services division, we have payments to our city attorney's office, to our labor attorney's office, and I've added in $20,000 or so for specialized counsel for development matters. It is very uncertain what that amount would be. There would be some certainly this year that will be doing quite a lot of work with that development attorney, but this may be something that we need to come back to on. I think that it was, we had some flexibility in this because I think we'll have a decrease in the labor attorney's portion of this budget in the coming year, but I felt that it was a reasonable approach to this. I hope I'm correct.
Yeah. I think we can safely say is that we just don't know how much it's going to, how much work we will need from the development attorney. And I guess when we start interviewing people and discussing and describing their tasks, we might begin...
And we should be hearing about when we can start interviewing those people fairly shortly.
Have you been already put out feelers for this?
Yes.
Oh, you have?
Yeah.
Was that an RFP or was it...
Sue Silver's office is approaching various folks and so then it'll come back through the council. We want to have you involved in that discussion.
Okay.
And when do you anticipate having that happen, in next month?
Within the next month or so, yeah. We want to move it right along because we want to advance the formal letter of intent with NDC.
So, since Sue Silver's office reports to the city council and the mayor, obviously then we have a role...
Yes.
...in this selection and evaluation and selection.
That's right. We've had a discussion, I think, two weeks ago, Sarah Danes and Sue Silver and myself about kind of what the process should be. I spoke very strongly about the role of the council in that. It was something that I spoke with the mayor about. Exactly what the steps are, I'm not sure yet, but we'll go back and forth a little bit to make sure that it's, everybody's comfortable with a good process.
And when I met with the city attorney in the monthly meeting on Tuesday, that came up and that it was going to be council involved.
Suppose one of us, and I'm not saying this would be me, has the name of, or familiar with a law firm or an attorney?
Please, please give it to Sue. We have heard from a number of council members and from other folks and we've been passing along names.
Thank you.
For the information services division, their expenditures went up 26%. This is primarily because we've moved in some of the software costs into the IT department. It's software maintenance, the collaboration software. When you see some of the other departments, you'll see some of their numbers have gone down because they've been moved into IT.
So, it says that they're moving to the paperless operations across all departments. When will that actually occur?
Two hundred years.
I don't know. What we're trying to do is a lot of it relies on the financial system, the new software that we're hoping goes, goes live in about August or September. And a good deal of that means that a lot of the paper stuff that we do, we are going to be able to do just, you know, at our computers and the, we're looking forward to that very much. The next phase of that is the digitization of existing paper and that's going to take a while just because there's a process to go for with that. I think the more that we have a system where a resident who wants to know, gee, did I pay, when did I pay my stormwater bill or whatever, can just go and check it out, get a copy of it for their records if they needed something without having us even be contacted, without having to find the paper and send it in, you know, we'll, we'll go a long way to that.
What percentage of operations would you say is paperless?
Oh, man.
Now?
Nothing. I feel like, I mean, I know it is, but I know there, I don't know the percentage. I just think we're so over-reliant on paper that it's ridiculous and we all cannot wait to move to that next stage. And I, I think it's primarily, I mean, it's useful for us, but I think it's important for residents because that, it just adds transparency, it quickens the response and can't, I'm really looking forward to that. Having said that, knowing anytime you get a new software system in, it takes a little bit to get some bugs out and I'm not sure how that's going to go. We'll just have to keep moving it. I can tell you there's commitment to doing it. We're really, we're really ready.
All right.
Some of the other major initiatives of the IT department really do have to do with supporting the police department and they've been, I think Abel's been having fun with the Verizon dispatch work this week that after, how many years has it been that they were supposed, two years, that they were supposed to be here any day now to, to do a changeover on our, on our communication system. They showed up this week, so...
They're, they're moving faster than the state changeover to the county on the traffic signals.
Well, there you go, there's that. We do though, we are going to be working with the police department about how we store the information with body cameras and, and in general, how we use, how we appropriately use cloud-based services. HR, really boring division this year. The, the numbers go down because some of her IT expenses go over to IT. No change in staff. I think she's looking forward to a few less employment searches.
Can I ask, comment on...
Please.
Looking at the performance measures, which by the way, there's a lot of new ones in this budget and I appreciate them, I want you to know that. Total new hires in FY15 estimated is 37, which, that was not information previously imparted, I think, in the budget and it is a good measure of what you're up against. But that works out to almost a quarter of the entire number of people that work for us, which suggests a great deal of more turnover than I had understood that, I mean, I didn't have an understanding. I'm just surprised that it's, that it's that many people that we have to hire just to keep running in place.
Right. A good portion of that is the recreation staff.
It's part-time staff.
Because they're seasonal.
Oh, is that right?
So, yeah, so there's the ramp up for summer camp and all of that stuff and if they've got spring break or different programs. So, a good portion of the recruitment has to do with recreation, part-time people.
And then there's police.
Police, yeah, we're always recruiting and police, always.
Well, this is stuff that's, you know, way under the radar. Probably that's where it belongs, but I appreciate the, the information. The other thing is that average days to hire, you're projecting to get it down to 80 from 88. Is there a standard for towns our size that you know of in the human resources hiring?
I don't know what it is for other municipalities. I actually have not asked that question, but I do know that 60 days is preferred when it comes to doing a recruitment. A great deal of the amount of time that it's taking to do the recruitments has to do with the police department because they've got such an extensive process that they have to go through. Their time is taken roughly about six months. So, if we pull that out, it could shorten our time just for all of the other staff.
On average.
So, it's stuff like the clearances and then Karen Marashow, we went through the same thing that kind of distort that number.
Well, the police department, because they've got a totally different process. They actually go to people's homes and they discuss with neighbors and references. They do very, very detailed background searches. So, HR doesn't do that part specifically, but it does take that additional time in order to complete the process.
We have though, been able to speed up some of the background checks on other employees.
So, that the situation with Karen Marashow is no more.
No, it says here about the wellness program. Is that primarily for the police department or...
That's citywide.
Citywide, okay. And so, why aren't more people participating?
It's a little hard to tell, but it seems like individuals that are already interested in wellness are just doing it anyway, so they're the ones that participate. So, we need to find ways to kind of wrap our arms around the folks that really aren't all that into it and kind of garner a little bit more interest from them.
Do we offer any type of incentives for people to get in the program?
Yes and no. Not so much by way of a financial incentive or anything like that, but there are prizes for people, you know, if they participate in different programs and such as the Biggest Loser program. We had that and the winner got a gift card to a location of their choice.
Does the police department have a required physical regiment that they have to do?
They are actually implementing that now. Rick Bowers would be a much better person to be able to provide you with details on that, but what I can tell you is that they are implementing it and the, the police officers have to do it, but the pass fail part isn't really there.
Okay, so they're not like certified, right?
Right. They have to participate. There is the, we're trying to work on some incentives to do better. So, you know, the better that you do, the more incentive you'll be able to get.
Okay.
So, yes, we are actually looking at that.
Good.
I'm glad to hear that you're interested in shortening the cycle on, on new hires, but especially interested in the police department and I would like to hope that you can look at ways to improve that process. I know that they do have requirements as all jurisdictions do in the hiring of police officers to do the background checks and everything, but I continue to get, to hear candidates who have chosen to go to other jurisdictions say that the reason that they went is because it's taken so long for Tacoma Park to get them through the process where other jurisdictions have been able to move them through quicker. And, and in fact, in some cases Tacoma Park was their preferred agency, but because of the length of time, they just, they didn't want to give up the opportunity they had somewhere else. So, if there are any things that you can do to look at how that can be speeded up, it would be greatly appreciated, keeping the same quality, of course.
Exactly. Yeah, we would all like to be able to shorten the process so that we have less staff shortage issues because that has been a significant issue as you all are aware. I do know that the individual that they had primarily responsible was out for a few months with some medical things going on. So, there was a staff shortage issue there as well, which kind of increased the lag time.
It's an ongoing issue though.
It is, it is.
And for anybody who's interested, I'll be swearing in three new officers next Tuesday at 6:15 on the third floor.
Right. How is our workers' compensation rate trending? It's over, it's at 1.26 now.
Right.
You want to get it down a little teeny bit more, obviously.
I do, I do.
But is this, are we, are we doing better than prior years or...
It's, it's actually staying kind of flat, but 1.26 flat is better than it raising. So, yes, we're, we're slowly trending in the right direction. We were actually increasing, so now we're, we're starting to get back down.
Okay.
I will say that we have had some significant losses within the police department. Some of their injuries have been major. So, there is a possibility that we could see the trend pop up for next year, which I'm hoping doesn't happen. Next year, I'm sorry, FY17, which I'm hoping does not happen, but there is that possibility.
I guess the police department workers' comp gets lumped with all the other employees.
It does.
Yeah. It would be interesting, I guess, just from an academic point of view to see what the non-police department workers' comp rate is and it'd probably be pretty close to the bottom rate, I would imagine.
It is, it is.
Outside the police department.
I know that the police officers' rate for FY16 actually has gone up. Their cost per $100 of payroll has gone up. The other two have actually gone down, so, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else for HR? City clerk's office. Again, not a whole lot of excitement, but you get an election this year.
Oh, back up a slide. I think that less than...
It's less than 5% increase.
Oh, okay.
It caught me off guard too at first.
Yeah. Somehow I was trying to turn it into a negative.
Less than 0.5.
To be point, it's zero.
Yes, zero, it's less than 0.5.
Close to 0.1 percent.
We will check that.
$300 on 3,000.
Seven decimal points, right.
300 on 3,000 is 0.1%.
Never, yeah, just never, well, we'll, we'll get it right.
Too many pencils.
And again, the expectation is that the digitization of the records would be continued as we get the financial system onboard. Added in, besides the general government department, we put in two different categories for the, also discussion. There's non-departmental. The non-departmental section of the budget covers things like insurance, our employee training. It's the place where the community grants money is, is listed. It's the place where the grants for the Independence Day and the Folk Festival committees are listed. It's where we list our contribution to the state homeowner property tax credits and there's some city charter requirements for general contingency funds there. Basically, it's just slightly higher based on some small increases in the grant programs and those kinds of things.
The auto liability insurance claims, you're estimating they're going to double this year and stay at that level next year? On page 151.
Don't, I'm not an expert in that, I'll have to get back to you. We have had some bad car items, so I'll have to double check on that one.
You mean actual accidents? You mean actual accidents? Actual accident?
I'm sorry? The auto, the auto claims.
Because that's not good.
And I will, I will get back with you on that, I don't know the answer. The other item just to cover is we have debt service, we have two outstanding bonds. One for the 2005 Community Center Bond and the 2010 Public Works Bond. Ms. Brooks and I have met with representative from the state program that, that issues these bonds, the Community Center Bond. There's an opportunity for us to essentially refinance that bond. We're at the, at the year when that's a possibility. With doing that, I think we can save about $160,000 over the remaining 10 years of the bond. There's some opportunities with that. We'll be back to you about what those opportunities are, especially if there's a determination that in the future we'd be doing some other funding with bonds. My recommendation is that, that this is probably not going to happen for FY16, but we'll talk it out with you. Other than that, it's a fairly routine amount that we pay and we've not had major changes in this in some time.
I want to make sure I understand on the, what you were just talking about with the, with the bond. I think what you're saying is that we've now reached the age in that bond where from, from now on, we would be able to do something as opposed to, we have a window to do it.
It's the 10-year mark.
It's, yeah, it's the 10-year mark. That's, that's right. Right now, the interest rates are low, so it's a good opportunity.
Right.
You know, it may not be that.
But if we held off for six months or nine months and the rates were still good, or 12 months, we, we wouldn't lose the opportunity, the window wouldn't close?
Well, except that the Maryland program, they, they only do the reissuances when, when there's enough to do it. And they're looking at a June opportunity.
Okay, okay.
So that's, that's what we're focused on right now is to make a determination if we would, we would join in on a June opportunity.
I just want to understand the externalities that would guide when we would do it.
That's right.
And whether there were multiple opportunities or whether there was a kind of a best case.
There's somewhat limited opportunities.
Putting aside our interest liability, it looks like the total bond indebtedness is around a little less than $2.4 million.
That sounds about right. Just looking at that.
I'm looking at pages 159 and 160. Okay, says, yeah.
Do you have that?
You just add the two principles.
Yes.
You just add the two principles together.
Well, I'm assuming since this is the fiscal year, we owe a little bit more that we'd be paying back. You know, you can prorate the amount per year. So it's that plus a little bit as of this minute, close enough.
I think that the, the idea of refinancing debt services brings up the, the age, this, the question one always has. I remember discussing this with Barbara Matthews about the temptation to kind of want to get rid of the debt, but then realizing that the cost of funds, the cost of borrowing can, on the other hand, can be so low because of extraordinarily low interest rates that we've had for the past six or seven years, that it's almost foolish not to borrow. You know, it's, I'm not saying taking a side on it, but that's, that's sort of the equation that we need to keep in mind.
There is that. There's obviously, there's the whole concept of bonding, which is that you're paying for a long-term thing. Many people, a couple generations are paying for something that's a longer term.
And it's very different than personal borrowing where it's the same people benefiting from the borrowing over time. In the case of borrowing by a public entity, it's, it's the shifting population over time. And so it's, as those populations get to use whatever it is that's being bonded, they're actually paying for it as opposed to making the people who were there at the time that the construction is done or the project is done, paying the, the whole thing.
Right, exactly.
And yet, while we have only $2.4 million in bond indebtedness right now, we do have several times that in pension liabilities that are unfunded at this moment. In other words, the, maybe Ms. Brooks would dispute my calling of pensions as the equivalent of debt, but they're both liabilities. And so the city's liability picture is much more than the bond debt.
That's right.
Especially now that those pension figures come above the line.
Correct.
So I would consider the, I would consider the wording when we talk about foolish not to borrow, I would consider that in light of the overall liabilities that the city faces.
Or if we took the attitude that the state does, oh, it doesn't matter.
Well, we don't.
Right, we, we're careful about those.
The state has been a master at moving money around in ways that are improper, not legally, but ethically, in my opinion.
I tend to agree with you.
That's all that we had for this evening. If you've got any other questions now, it's fine. But very much like to, as you think about these things, let me know if there's more information that you need. The, the PowerPoint presentation on the general government and HCD simply listed information that was in your budget book. So it wasn't new information. It still will be posted. But if there's particular extra information that you think you're going to want about the departments that are yet to come, please let me know so we have that information for you in advance.
I'd just like to say that the presentation Ms. Danes gave tonight, I thought was a nice compliment to what was in our book. It was just a different way of presenting it.
Right, right.
So hopefully other departments can do something similar.
Okay.
Yes, because marching, marching through pages is no good.
I'd like to pose a question to you for something that's not on, that wasn't on tonight's agenda. You forwarded to, if you're prepared to discuss this in public at this moment, you forwarded to the council an email. You had consulted our Sue Ellen Fergus and our attorney regarding the cable franchise agreements and determined from, or she determined, she gave the opinion that around $245,000 in cable, I'm sorry, cable franchise fees could be used for any purpose. I looked through this, it wasn't clear. What are those, what's that money being allocated to in the FY16 budget at this minute?
It's just part of the general fund.
So it is already going into the general fund?
That's right, that's right.
Thanks.
But what we, what we do do when we're looking at what the, the operating grant monies, which have traditionally been in the $75,000 range, but could go up, we make sure that, that there's adequate spending that's cable TV specific or IT related to the cable TV that is of a sufficient amount to, you know, to equate to that or to offset that. We want to make sure that we're not taking that money and using that inappropriately.
I, I found your, the, the email that Mr. Grimes is referring to, I had me a little confused. Such that, but my understanding is, is that the money that's required to be allocated for capital purposes has to be related.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. But the other money, which we have negotiated to make it a larger amount, is, can be used in any way we want, just goes in the.
No.
That was the $424,900.
The, the amount that we get in franchise fees every year, which is, which has been in about the $240,000 range, is, is simply, it's revenue for the city. The operating money, which has tended to be in the 70s, 70,000's range. And recently we got the additional 300-some thousand. That needs to be not, that cannot be more than what we spend on cable operating or the IT assisting the cable operating. So that we make sure that we have staff really doing work for those funds.
In other words, it has to be related.
Has to be related.
To IT.
And, and that 300 sum that we got was the trade where we gave the county some capital money to get some of their operating money.
That's right.
We gave them more capital money than they gave us operating money.
Yes.
Yeah, but.
It was, it was to help both of us, but it helped, it helped both of us, but it sticks.
It's annoying.
It, it sticks in the craw that yet again, they get.
More money.
More money.
But we.
But we benefited, we, we benefited.
We needed the, we need the operating funds.
We, we had blood running from our tongues as we said yes.
It's a Chris Christie type of operation.
Couple, one question and one compliment, if I may. The question has to do with when you think that, and I know you really can't answer this question because you're just got appointed like a week ago. The new deputy city manager might, you hope would be coming on, onto the payroll. That's a budget-related question.
Within 80 days.
And, and the same would go for the new finance director, if you have an answer for that.
When would they?
Yes, when, when, I mean, the first is pretty hypothetical, the second one is.
Well, I mean, I think that there, the, I mean, we have to do an announcement for the deputy and do interviews and that kind of thing. And so I would anticipate three months or.
Close to the end of fiscal year.
Yeah, I mean, it's just how it goes. You know, if they're very good, they're probably working and then they can't just walk off the job. So there's always that. The, we've been having some discussions about the timing of the, the new finance director. And I was hoping it was going to be next month, but it may be closer to June.
Oh, really?
We're still having those discussions.
The compliment is, one, I appreciate the fact that on some of these pages where divisions or departments have revenue, that you've put the revenue information on the same page instead of, in the past years, it was always like in.
Somewhere else.
Oh, somewhere else in the budget. Second, some of the metrics that you've noted are much improved, much more meaningful, so that we can actually ask questions about them, not, as opposed to, you know, how many boxes of paper clips got used or something. The third is the fact that everything in this binder is on eight and a half by 11 vertical. So we're not turning it around like this and turning it this way and that way. And I realize that in reading tonight, today, that it makes 100% difference. Those are little things and I greatly appreciate, this is a clearer, an easier, and I know Brian made some improvements over the ones that Barb used to do, but this is yet a big step. And I greatly, I just wanted you to know.
We can't wait till next time because this one, I got more gray hairs out of this one. But thank you, I appreciate it. We do want it to, to be easy to use.
Yes, it's better, far better than it was when I first came onboard here. I didn't know what the heck I was looking at.
Thanks.
You, you ain't seen the bad ones.
No, it's true, I didn't.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
We're adjourned.